I will officially call the meeting to order. It is seven o'clock on the nose. Thank you, everybody, for being here. It is February 16th. Hope you, everybody had a nice Valentine's Day. Let's, we've got Councilman Rylands on the phone and Pam Buckle, Council Lady Buckle, will be here in a little bit. So if you would, please join in the moment of silent reflection followed by the pledge. Thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have a few folks that wish to address council this evening. One singular person who is on our agenda, and that is Laura Ward. Welcome. Laura represents Country Roads Transit, and she visits us, visits us once a year to talk about the transit authority and how it's doing and how we help. So, good evening.
How are you?
We're fine. How are you?
Um, I'd like to say we broke a record because usually on the day you schedule me, there's a snowstorm. Might be the first time in years and years that it wasn't COVID or a snowstorm, so we're damn good.
Well, I mean, it might be showing an elephants. I don't know.
We don't care about that today.
There you go.
Thanks for letting me come and report to you on your investment in public transit in Upshire County and in the citizens who utilize that service. So for fiscal year 2022 and thus far in 2023, we are seeing an increase in ridership. In fact, we're on trend to return to our pre-COVID numbers if the trend continues for this year. As you know, COVID, like it affected so many other things, really affected public transit. So we're almost back, back to square one. Those are rides to work, to mental health and medical appointments. Those are rides to the grocery store and to the pharmacy and to social and recreational activities and more. I'm sure everyone in this room can glean the importance of those rides, although most of you probably drove yourself here today. For many of our neighbors who need to get to that grocery store or that medical appointment, they are not so fortunate enough to have that, that transportation available to them. And so public transit then becomes a lifeline for those folks. And every dollar that you invest in transit supports that lifeline for those citizens. I'll remind you that we leverage FTA dollars with matching local funds. It's a 50-50 match program, which means that we have to raise half of that money in order to bring those, those federal dollars into the communities that we serve. It also means that every dollar that you invest provides $2 of service to your community. I know you're all very busy. I come here every year and I say, hey, I'd like to invite you to ride transit. Come and ride transit. And nobody ever does because everybody's really busy, right? And I understand that. It's also really hard for me to get my riders to come to a city council meeting with me and explain to you how vital that is. That's why I ask you to ride, because it's one thing for me to tell you their stories. It's something else entirely for you to sit on that van with those folks and hear from their own experience and their own words why that's important. So I'm going to tell you a few stories. If you rode, I've changed names, of course, but if you rode, you might ride with Miss Jane, and she's a 68-year-old rider that takes our, our van service every single day to her job as an in-home care assistant. She loves talking about her family, and she has lived in Buchanan since 1987 and loves to talk about all the changes that have happened since 1987. She never has a bad day. She announces to everybody on the van, including the driver, anytime it's Friday by hitting on the van and going, woo-hoo, it's Friday. So if you're going to ride with Jane, you should ride on a Friday. Or you might ride with Bob, and Bob rides to our VA service. You remember, we started that a few years ago, going to the Clarksburg VA Medical Centers. And so he rides regularly with us to the VA when he has appointments there. He was a combat medic in the Army, and after his service, he actually worked with veterans to try to help them fill out the, I don't know if any of you are veterans that have filled out veterans paperwork, but it's overwhelming, and he helped them do that so they could get services. He also likes to help his neighbors by mowing the lawn and doing outside work for them. And he volunteers at the parish house where you can find him most days of the week, helping out with taking donations and serving, giving out seed. Hazel is a 40-year-old rider, and she rides our service every day to get to her volunteer position at a local youth center. She's legally blind. She has a wonderful service dog who is a joy to all the other riders. They, they are, brings a smile to their face. And she's lived in Buchanan her whole life and has been our rider since our inception in 2006. We're really happy that you have also been helping us since 2006. You've been our partners from the very beginning, and we can't tell you how much we appreciate that. There are lots of other riders that you could learn their stories with. I hope we can maybe get a video and bring that next year so you can hear it in their own words without them having to come here or interrupting your busy schedule. But wherever they're going, we're getting them there safely, and you're ensuring that we can do that. And we appreciate that very much. We have submitted our application for continued funding, and we hope that with your kind of consideration that that will continue.
The Revenue and its Standards Review Committee has reviewed that and has approved to recommend that to the full city council during budget session, so.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Do you guys have any questions?
You said you're just about up to the same numbers as pre-COVID?
Yes.
And do you, any major changes since we've come out of COVID that you've seen any problems or any?
No problems. We were required for some time afterwards, even when other places dropped the mask mandate. We were required by the FTA to keep that mandate for quite some time. But we're, we don't have to do that now. We're back to normal. I think I got one question early on about, from a, from a councilperson, about how many rides were actually in the city of Buchanan. And so I can tell you that we provided last year 5,814 rides in Upshire County. 2,726 of those were our route. 2,726 of those were route service. So the route, the only part of our route that's not in the city of Buchanan is Kroger, I believe, if we looked at that correctly. It goes south to Kroger, and I think that's just outside of city limits.
But it, but it starts in city, right?
It starts in the city. So all the rest of the route is in the city except Kroger. And we estimate that of the demand response rides, which are the other 3,088 rides we gave last year, that 75%, and that's a conservative estimate, are rides within the city of Buchanan. And so if we look at that, that is 5,042 of the 5,814 rides that occur within the city of Buchanan.
I'm going to have to give you those numbers again. I'm sorry. 5,800 is the total?
5,814 is the total number of rides in Upshire County.
75% of that is within the city. You have to make.
No, 20, no. Of that 5,840 total rides, 2,726 are route service. The remaining, which would be 3,088, are the demand response service. And I'd be happy to explain that. I see a couple new places if that's necessary. But of that 3,088, which are demand response rides, we think 75% of those.
Okay. When you say demand response, is that the day before or the day of, or both?
So it can be both. We, we request that people call us 24 hours in advance, and that is so we can make sure we're fitting everybody in the schedule. However, people call all the time, the same day, and if we have time in our schedule, we take them.
And you pick the individuals up at their home?
We, we can pick them up at home or at any destination. It's a curb-to-curb service, so we can't help them out of their home or into their home, of course. But pick them up at their home, take them where they need to go. On demand response, they call us when they're done. We go pick them up and take them back home.
And you've not had any councilpersons in the van with you? Ever?
I, I'm not going to say ever, but nobody officially said to me, hey, I'm, I'm scheduling a ride.
I'm going to schedule a ride in a couple of months.
That, you, you call us, we'll be tipping you debts, sir. Yes, sir. We'd be happy to have you. You could make it a group effort. It could be a party. I'll pay your.
I don't know about that.
It's a party bus. It's still not a bus.
You tip really well.
Yeah. I might buy some donuts too.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be a great group effort. We'd like to get some.
And I might kidnap the service dog too.
Okay, Dave. I knew it was Mike. I did. I wanted, I wanted, I wanted CJ to hear his antics. Any other?
Look, Laura, is it Monday through Friday? I'm like, you don't do weekends?
It's Monday through Friday. And, and that is our goal, one of our goals, is extended service hours, Monday through Friday, and weekend service is a goal. Everything is about Monday. So we have to, you know, as steward to those funds, we have to concentrate that where we can have the biggest impact. And right now, that's Monday through Friday.
How many veterans take advantage of your service?
So we are, that's, that particular service is a two-day-a-week service, and it goes to both the VA, and we expanded that to go to UHC as well because lots of folks had that need and, and talking to the folks at St. Joe's, that was the need. So I can tell you that we're, on average, picking three people on that route a week. We only, they call ahead, so we only go if we have someone scheduled, of course. But we're, we're averaging, we're averaging at least once a week and sometimes more than that.
And your financial requests the same as it has been for the past number of years, is that right?
Yes. So last year, you were generous enough to give us that extra $5,000 so we could keep that veterans route going. So you've, you provided $10,000 historically and added that five last year. So our request is $15,000 this year. Our total budget for, for the transit program is, we're still working on the draft for this year. It's not due to the division yet, but it's somewhere around $670,000.
It's a great service. Thank you very much for always coming over, and we're happy to support it. So council will be officially reviewing the requests in our future budget sessions in the next few weeks, so.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you for your.
Take care.
Thank you. Have a nice weekend.
You too.
Okay. We have Mike Ruffing here. As, as council may recall, Mike is our, one of our three city appointments to the Buchanan Upshore Airport Authority. And recently, he was elected the president of the Airport Authority. So one of our, one of our appointments is the president. So it's great news. So thank you for being here to bring us greetings from the airport.
It's my pleasure. And thank you for allowing me to serve on the Airport Authority. It's been, it's been a lot of fun for me, and I'm looking forward to the upcoming year. I get to serve as president and hopefully bring you guys and folks some more updates around what we're doing at the airport. We do have a lot of exciting things that we are finally starting to see some traction on. For anybody who doesn't know, in the past three or four months, we have our first general manager at our airport, which we, as far as I know, haven't had in the history of the airport. So we have somebody there functionally working every day, every week on our behalf, trying to generate more business for the airport, trying to make it more financially and fiscally stable so that it can start to generate its own revenue along with the support we get from the city, from the county, and obviously from the FAA. So having a general manager there has been a big help. Jenny Powers was hired, and she's been spending her time going through a lot of, a lot of airport managers' training these last couple of months. And she's, she's been responsible for a lot of the other pieces that we're going to, we're going to talk about. We have implemented a program at the airport now where we had one, one hangar, it's actually half a hangar, that didn't have a, that didn't have a long-term lease sign. So Jenny actually designed and implemented a short-term lease strategy for a lot of helicopters and different services that have been coming through the area. That mixed with the fact that we have some of the most affordable prices on Jet A and AvGas have made us a good target for planes and helicopters to land and stop and fuel over, which hopefully is also having a positive impact on our different hotels and different heads and beds and our accounts for the CVB. So we're excited to continue that. We're going to work on a partnership with, with the city, with the CVB for this upcoming year. So Jenny's been instrumental in getting us to that point. So far in the last 30 days, it's had about a 220% increase in revenue from that hangar over previous leases. So that's been, it's been a huge coup for us since she started. She's also very instrumental, and we're working on implementing a new marketing plan for 2023 into 2024. So we are currently going through and expanding a lot of the information and a lot of the communication around why the airport is, can be influential in our community, can bring us people from outside, can help with visitors, events, you know, and different things along that line. So we're really excited for the upcoming year. I just wanted to say thank you for the support of the city and what we have going on. And I just want everybody to keep an eye out. We have a lot of great and positive things coming this year and beyond. So thank you. And if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them as well.
Any questions for Mike?
I'll note, I served on the board for a couple of years, and one of the reasons I think the short-term lease is working too is our, our colleagues up the street, the county commission was able to provide a rental car or a courtesy car. Could you inform the council how that's working?
Thank you for reminding me.
Sure.
I didn't want to say it. So another one of the things that we were fortunate enough to have is, is county commission, the county was able to provide us with a Toyota rental car, not a rental car, but a courtesy car. So a lot of our people that stay, that are coming in for an overnight, a lot of these short-term folks are able to actually use that vehicle, get to and from, you know, whether they need to run to the store, get to their hotel, whatnot. That has been, that has helped us out a lot as well because most other airports don't have that ability. So, and the county was very gracious to us last year through some of the leftover CAREJAC money and those things. They were, they were very supportive of the airport as well as the city. So it was made for a great thing.
Yes, and I would note that's one of the, I think the airport is one of those examples of how the county and the city work together very well.
Absolutely. Sam has been, Sam has been a definite partner for me on the board, you know, helped me with moving into this position. You know, Tom was our president for a long time and did a great job as well. You know, and now with some of his extra duties, you know, it was, it was time for somebody to step up and kind of take some of that off of his plate. And he still, he still does a lot for the Airport Authority, and we look forward to that to continue. But yeah, definitely is a, is a great partnership, and I enjoy working with both the city and the county on it.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
All right. Anybody else wish to address council? Hearing none, we will consider the, the timeframe for public guests and comment to be closed. All right. We now enter our department reports. And first up is Jerry Arnold, Director of Public Works, who should appear right there. It's like magic.
I guess the first is good news. I damaged a phone cable down at the Madison Street lots that we are behind a little bit on our electrical service. We have a meeting next week with the telephone company down there at the lot about placing a pole box there where I hit the lot. Street crews continue to work on getting. Street crews continue to work on Gateway West and Florida Street sidewalks. Sewer finished the sewer upgrade on Westview Acres, and working on the service upgrades to services on South Florida Street. Water crews have been changing out meters and laying a new line on Colorado Street. Waste, I've ordered a scale that can be attached to our winch cables on the garbage trucks, and we will be conducting a waste audit on all of our commercial customers as soon as that comes in. Under engineering, the Tendertown Booster Station, the bid for Contract A Water Line Replacement Project was approved at the 2-9 water board meeting, and the notice of award will be executed and delivered to Pro Contracting this week. The bid for Contract B Booster Station Building Replacement Project was rejected at the 2-9 meeting, and the contractor's been notified, the contract will be re-advertised on 2-14 and 2-21. And that's all I have there unless there's questions.
Any questions for Jerry?
This is a comment. There's two lights out. One, and then another one between 64 Bogus Street. Both thumbs out.
I just, okay, because I get these requests a lot. I just wanna make sure those poles have numbers, and it's best to get the...
They're beat up, though.
But you can still go up and see them, and it's best to get those pole numbers and report them to Mon Power. The City of Buchanan does not own the streetlights. Those are Mon Power. So the fastest way to get it done is you can go right online, and you can report an outage, and you can put that pole number in, and it streamlines right to the, and it doesn't have to be from council. I mean, anybody, if you see a street light out, you can go to the pole. Residents can do it, business owners can do it. You can read the pole ID number, go online, put it in, and Mon Power is pretty responsive. I did it to one on, what was, oh, corner of Barber and Canal, and literally, within forty-eight hours, it was fixed. So that is, just for everybody's PSA, that is the fastest way to do it.
That's the no, I've never been told.
And it'll be an empty number.
Yeah, yeah. And you're right, some of them are beat up, but you can still see them. And if it's too beat up, you can always bypass it and just put the street and near address.
And there again, if you do want to notify the city, do so through City Hall, so there's a work order. So we have a way to track it.
I'm just so used to you doing everything, Jerry.
Well, again, Pam, we would notify. But if you do call in, even with like, just like Dennis this evening was telling me about a pothole, anytime you have an issue like that, please call City Hall. We have iWorks, that's the tracking software we use to track all of our work orders. So it will generate a work order, and then that work order has to have a response back to it so we can track what's being done, and same way with alleys, anything like that. Please just notify City Hall and get that in. Again, Pam, I've been known to forget stuff once in a while.
Now, what I will say is if it seems to take too long, then we have a relationship here at City Hall with Mon Power specifically, because they do, they are the power company for the community. If residents report it and it seems to take too long, or you don't think it's going fast enough, they can call City Hall, and then we can be in contact directly with Mr. Pengley at Mon Power.
And we do, at least a couple of times a year, Brad will drive all the streets. He'll mark the poles, if you see yellow ribbon on, caution ribbon on, he tells the poles, that's what it is, it's indicating a light needs attention.
Yep. Any other questions for Jerry? Thanks, sir.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry.
And Barrow?
Okay, I'm gonna give you your balances for your enterprise funds. January 31st. Waste collection money market and checking, one million two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, and they have a CD of savings of fifty-eight thousand, plus a letter of credit for sixty-four thousand. Water boards money market and checking, eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand, and we have those required depreciation working capital funds of eight hundred and seventy-four thousand. Sanitary board money market and checking, nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Again, those required working capital and depreciation accounts are at four hundred and fifty-nine thousand. Stormwater funds are two hundred and forty-nine thousand. I told you that I would try to report either Stalkard or the Colonial each time. So Stalkard, I'm just gonna give you a brief update. Their basketball program's going well, and they're ready to start their tournaments next week. That program has about three hundred participants in it. The after-school program's running smooth, and they have about thirty-five to forty youth each weekday attending those programs. The mayor mentioned it, the city council, for the public to know this, city council has held one working session so far. That was to review what the Stalker Youth Center and the Fire Chief wanted to present in their proposed budgets for fiscal year 2023-24. And then we also went over some revenue items and the need to update the security system and IT network here at City Hall. The next working session is tentatively scheduled for February 27th. We will post that when everything's ready. And the budgets for those will be reviewed with the Police Department, the Street Department, and the Colonial Arts Center. In your bills to be approved, worth noting, our seven thousand was to Rizel Enterprises for foundation and epoxy floor at City Hall. Or City, yeah, City Hall. That's to finish up the work we had from last year, so they've got it all cleaned up. Ready. Scott Electric, nineteen hundred for materials for Madison Street project. Twenty-four hundred redbud supply for traffic cones. Twenty-four hundred for RVR Energy Resources, that's eleven yards of concrete for Gateway West project. Forty-nine hundred Rizel Enterprises for the prep port for Florida Street sidewalks. And then fourteen thousand to Rizel for the labor at the theater. And that's all I have.
Did you say a time for the budget hearing on February 27th?
Three o'clock is what we've talked about, so I think it's gonna be at three.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's what we really wanna make sure, that he was okay to that.
Any other questions for Ambi? Thank you very much. Up next, who will appear in a second, is Matt Gregory.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm doing well.
By the way, the new police cruisers are sharp.
Yes.
They're really sharp looking. Lot of compliments on them at the Polar Plunge down at the river, because it was sitting there, so.
Good.
Right.
Well, is that everybody's favorite time of year?
CJ said that.
So I want to report our annual report.
Wait, let me start my timer, Matt.
Are you telling me what you're telling us, Matt?
I think, what, about ten minutes? Is that my metric?
Yep.
All right, I'll try my best.
Try your best.
I'll just hit the highlights. The report is made up of a number of sections for like, 2022 stats to include not only the statistics from our records management system.
Somebody's not muted. Tom, you need to mute. Tom, you need to mute.
She went to get him.
Tom, mute.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought you put my memory. Would you like to, CJ, is that you?
Yes, sir.
All right, it's like herding cats. Okay.
Oh, wait a minute. Did I get a reset on the timer?
I reset you, I did, I'll do it again. Reset. Go.
So the stats are made up of information from our records management system, as well as monthly reports from our officers, to also include information from our 911 center. And if you look at the statistical part of the report, most of the activities are either similar to years past, and I always like to look at for trend, for trending purposes, at least the last couple of years, have at least a three-year trend. So compared to that, the stats are either similar or in many cases, down slightly for the year 2022. The reports that we took throughout the year was four hundred and fifty-two, and of those, two hundred and ninety-two were cleared, for a clearance rate of sixty-five percent. Total accidents taken, total accident reports taken in 2022 was one hundred and fifty-three. That's up just slightly from the past year, and up just a little more than that from a couple of years before that. Of the one hundred and fifty-three accident reports taken in 2022, thirty-four were accidents that involved injuries. So for a rate of twenty-two percent, so that's, again, on par with what we've seen with our accident-to-injury ratio. Of the four hundred and fifty-two reports that I mentioned that were taken throughout the year, that involved a total of five hundred and sixty-eight separate crimes. Many of our reports are what's known as multi-offense indicators, which means that they include at least two or more different criminal occurrences on one report. The top five crimes reported has really not changed. It's mainly theft and drug offenses that we've seen over the last several years. As I've done in many reports in the past, I itemize each of the misdemeanor and felony arrests. Total amount of misdemeanor arrests in 2022 was two hundred and forty-eight, and thirty-six felony arrests were made. Misdemeanor arrests are slightly down, but on par with what we've seen over the last few years. Felony arrests are down by about fifty percent. Total traffic warnings, again, I itemize not only warnings and citations, just as I do with misdemeanors and felonies. Total citations written in 2022 was ninety-one, and total warnings given was seven hundred and thirty-eight. The last portion of the statistical section of the report, again, looks at all the top five occurrences for the last three years, and this is where we can, again, see where our numbers either are on par or slightly lower. And I look at reports, traffic offenses, misdemeanor arrests, felony arrests, as well as 911 calls. And again, there's similarity across the board with what we've seen over the last several years. The next section of the report is a report from the Mountain Lakes Drug and violent Crime Unit. And again, the next year will be the Mountain Region Drug and violent Crime Unit since the two task forces became one here just recently. This report reflects the, not only the efforts of the Buchanan Police Department, but all of the task force and the areas that it covers. And it covered a five-county region before and since its merger, and now covers a ten-county region. So I expect these numbers to undoubtedly increase as we see the continued activity. We are entering our sixth year into belonging with a task force, and we have maintained a commitment of one full-time officer throughout that time period. We also, the task force also enjoys the services of our K-9 unit as well on an as-needed basis whenever situations call for the assistance of K-9 units. If you look at this report, again, as reflected by the totality of the task force, but not just Buchanan region, you will see that work remains consistent, especially if you look at the second page of the task force report and look at the, just the sheer amounts of drugs that were taken off our streets for the year 2022. And I'll point out a few of those, just because it's significant. Specifically, when you look at fentanyl. Fentanyl is one of the more deadly drugs that we're dealing with out here on our streets, and a lot of the overdose situations, especially the fatal overdose situations. Oftentimes, it's a result of lethal exposure to fentanyl. Three hundred and nine grams were seized. That doesn't sound like a lot, but that is significant, because it only takes a minuscule amount of fentanyl to be detonated. So that is a tremendous amount of fentanyl that was taken off the streets in this region. Among that, one thousand four hundred and twenty-one point two grams of heroin was taken off our streets. Skip down to methamphetamine, six hundred and seventy-two point sixty-seven grams of methamphetamine, and three hundred and thirty-six different pills were taken off of our streets. Nineteen firearms were also seized as well. A number of these cases continue to be worked by our task force members, and we have realized not only state charges, but also federal charges with many of these incidents as well, that has resulted in significant cases that we've seen of these dangers that have been on our streets. The next section, and is a companion piece to the task force report, is the deployment summary of our K-9 unit. And this looks, on a month-to-month basis throughout the year of 2022, all the various deployments of our K-9 unit to include not only the types of deployments. Again, we have a dual-purpose K-9 that is trained for not only detection, drug detection, but also tracking and apprehension. And there were zero apprehensions, our K-9 was not used in any use-of-force situations. However, there was a variety of deployments that involved detection as well as tracking. Actually had a couple of very successful tracks on some felony situations where individuals had fled from officers, and the K-9 was able to track them down for a safe apprehension. So this report reflects each of those deployments and breaks down, for detection's sake, the types of drugs that were seized. And this specifically, whereas the task force report is for the region, the K-9 report is strictly for the city of Buchanan. So when you see the deployments and the types of drugs that are seized as a result of detection, this is right here off the streets of our city of Buchanan. And again, it's very consistent with what you see in the task force report, with many of the seizures to include heroin, methamphetamine, and various other drugs. The next several pages of the report involve our correspondence with Calea. As you know, we have a number of time-sensitive standards to uphold with Calea each year, much of which corresponds with the calendar year and our annual recording of our statistics. These reports include our bias-based profiling analysis, our use-of-force analysis, and our post-pursuit analysis. This is where we look at the various statistics of each of those respective areas that are generated by the city of Buchanan police officers throughout the year. An analysis is conducted on each of those activities and reported to Calea. Of each of those three areas, the analysis did show that there were no abnormalities, no anomalies, and everything was consistent with policy as well as standards of training. And so our recommendation moving forward is to continue our focus on these issues through our training so that we can keep this consistent response. The final report, the final correspondence with Calea after these three analyses, is the Simmers Report. That comprises a number of pages of the annual report. Simmers is our annual report. Simmers stands for the Calea Information Management Reporting System, and it is the software tool that Calea uses for candidate agencies to report their activities each year. Simmers is broken into two specific reports. The annual statistical report, which is comprised in these several pages of the annual report, as well as the agency status report, which is conducted forty days prior to the web assessment, which will be later this summer. So we'll complete that sometime in July. However, the annual statistical report is due at the first of every year, again, to correspond with the annual statistics of the previous calendar year. This looks at the various operations, there's a lot of overlap between the analyses and Simmers. So it looks at not only use-of-force and post-pursuit statistics, but it also looks at various other things to include our HR functions in terms of complaints that we've received, internal investigations that may have been conducted, as well as promotions and the hiring process that we report on. And then finally, beyond Simmers, once you move beyond Simmers, the last page, and you guys have already seen this, I just included, just for the sake of being comprehensive, and that is the VIPS Annual Report, and that is included in here as well. And Mayor, that is the annual report.
Wait a minute, let me see here.
Wait a minute, let me see here. Wait. Hey, ten forty, not bad, Matt.
Bravo, bravo.
We give him a hard time because we love him so much. Any questions or comments for Matt relative to the city police department's annual report?
What type of training has your department undertaken to ensure the safety of yourself and the other officers?
So we are constantly looking for ongoing training, particularly our safety training. We do have training that we have had sponsored by our health department to focus on Narcan delivery, and part of that is also safety training and how we keep ourselves safe first and foremost as we respond to these types of issues. We also have, mainly through Kalia, we have subscription to what's known as Police One Academy, which provides online training for officers, so we're always looking at various trainings to provide throughout the year to enhance our safety on our streets through that medium as well.
Was there anything that took place, I mean, was there anything that you noticed that was just out of the ordinary over the course of the last twelve months? I mean, was there anything that just happened here that hadn't happened, or anything you just, you know, kind of spiked that you're now on your radar for something down the line?
Not really, no. As the numbers reflect, there was just a lot of consistency with what we've seen. And like I said, in many areas, a lot of the statistics were down compared to past years. So in that, there's really nothing abnormal that really jumped out and was an outstanding type of situation.
That's good. That's good.
I have a question on this page, Criminal Reports. So I'm reading this hit-and-run thirty-one.
Yes.
Those vehicles hit and runs, or?
Yes, yes. It's also, I put hit-and-run because that's the slang term for it. The specific nomenclature for it in our records management system is leaving the scene of an accident.
Okay.
So when a vehicle is struck by another car and it doesn't stay to report the accident, we call that a hit-and-run.
Is that average? Is that number?
Yeah, it's consistent with, again, what we've seen over the years. A lot of these hit-and-runs occur on private parking lots.
Gotcha.
And very few of them on city streets. Most of it is somebody's in the store and they're shopping, and they come out and they see someone who's back in going or something like that.
Right, right, that makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Notice there's never been any use of a taser. Is that outlawed now, or you just?
No, no, that's just, that's just consistent with, if you look at our use-of-force. Use-of-force was actually fairly low last year in terms of numbers. I just want to turn to it and make sure I'm citing the right number. I believe it was thirteen. There were only thirteen, there were a total of two hundred and thirty-one arrests made. Okay, so two hundred and thirty-one arrests, and of those, only thirteen uses of force. So if you look at the stats, and I think I state this in the narrative of the report, that's a four percent. Yeah, it's five point six percent. So that's, that's a very, I know I have sat through other Kalia, because when you, when you are up for accreditation or reaccreditation during your four-year cycle with Kalia, one of the things that you have to do is appear before the commission, and they ask you a lot of questions about your statistics and your operations. One of the main things that they focus on, and Randy can attest to this because he saw this at our hearing there about a year and a half ago, they focus a lot on use-of-force. And they look at your numbers, and what I've seen, not only just with our own hearing that we've had, but I've sat through other hearings of other departments, anything under ten percent, Kalia just embraces that and talks about the usefulness of de-escalation and training and what an even-handed approach that departments have to have those type of numbers.
Is usually alcohol involved in something like that?
Yeah, that's one thing that we look at as well in our reports, because anytime a use-of-force happens, we have to detail not only the particulars of the force itself, but the circumstances as to why it was applied. And one of those factors that are looked at is whether or not drugs or alcohol was used or whether or not there was some type of mental health issue that had given rise to that. So we look at each of those, we track those numbers within each report, and then compile them into a total number for the analyses. And it's usually close to half of the incidents, give or take, that involves some form of drug, alcohol, something like that, some type of influence.
Chief, we've heard a lot about the simulator during the past year especially. Can you bring us up as to where we are with that?
Absolutely. The simulator has, was acquired late last fall, and so we've been putting it through its paces over the last couple of months. In fact, we just had it out today. A couple of our interns and volunteers were our test subjects today. We're just putting it through its paces, and there's so much versatility to it in terms of, in terms of its application as a training tool. It's a tremendous, tremendous asset that the police department has. And a lot of the, and what I liked about this at the outset, when we were exploring it, and I've only found that to be more and more true as we've put it through its paces, is the component that it's not called a shooting simulator, it's called a use-of-force simulator, and there's a reason behind that particular verbiage. And that is, a lot of the scenarios, and right now we have over eight hundred preloaded scenarios that cover everything from domestic incidents to disturbances to active shooters, a lot of the incidents have branchouts. So it's up to, it's up to the training and how they respond, how they interact with the scenario itself, as to how the instructor branches it out. It could go, it could become a lethal situation, or it doesn't have to be in a lot of cases, in many of the cases, and this was our, we were really trying to max it out today by using our interns and really putting them through a number of different scenarios and how they would respond. A lot of the situations can end peacefully. And the common denominator with that, and it carries over to when you see these types of Kalia statistics and these analyses that Kalia looks at, is de-escalation. How an officer approaches and becomes the force of calm and the voice of reason in these situations, and how they are able to bring a volatile situation to a peaceful resolution. And that's really the central theme that I found with a lot of these scenarios as an instructor, and putting that through its paces. I think we're going to see a lot of very positive results across the board with our police department and even beyond. This is a tool that we can, that we can share with other police departments, other police officers, and really become a center for having this type of progressive training in our department.
Our officer candidates are also doing well down at the academy?
Doing very, yeah, doing very well. They're in week five, so about a third of the way done, and getting nothing but good reports from them, so very much.
Last question, has there been any traction gains relative to Kalia in West Virginia, recognizing that there's only a couple of agencies that are certified?
There are three now. As you recall, Charlestown was a candidate also, and they were, they had actually started the process before we did, and I believe in two thousand and fourteen, and just had just dealt with it over the years. And I know that they finally wanted to see it to fruition and became the third accredited agency just not some in two thousand and twenty-two. So they're about a year after, we became accredited in twenty-one, they got it in two thousand and twenty-two. In fact, I sat on their, in the fall of twenty-one, leading up to their final stretch of their assessments throughout the winter of twenty-two, I sat on their mock assessment committee and corresponded with their mayor and their chief, and they had various other industry professionals that they knew from agencies in North Carolina. There was an individual from, I forget, from another state, but we met via Zoom, and each had sections of their assessment that we were able to give our feedback on and see them to fruition there for, again, to be the third agency. I've recently been in contact with the city of Wheeling. They are in a brand-new police department facility that are very progressive-minded. Their chief has, has a goal to become Kalia-accredited, and so he turned to me. I knew him from my service on the West Virginia Chiefs of Police Association Board of Directors. He was also a member of that as well. So he reached out to me with a lot of Kalia questions, again, with that as his end goal. So we corresponded, I sent him a big packet of information to get him started on a lot of the questions that he had, getting started in that. So we hope to see them as, and we talked about the scarcity of West Virginia agencies being Kalia-accredited and how we'd like to see that grow.
Thanks, Chief, very much.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. City Attorney Tom O'Neill does not have a report, but while we're at it, I do want to ask for a brief executive session, both on one property matter and two on a personnel matter. So please, please stick around for that at the end of the meeting. Correspondent information, very short report. Colonial Arts Center organizational chart is in your packet that has come out of the Colonial Arts Center Board. The Charles Gibson Library Director's Report, and we have the director here with us. Hello, Kathy. And then, this has been broadcast around the community a little bit, we have the survey online that is on the city's website, county's website, Chamber of Commerce circulated it. This is the emergency services study that Jeff Harvey has been working on. It is out there to take. It's two pages, it's three pages, it's not long, and the first two pages just have one question apiece, and then it's just one other page. So encourage you to take that survey. It is up and it is live, it can be viewed and taken via our City of Buchanan website. So please, please participate in that. I think as of Create Buchanan Today, I think there were about eighty-five, eighty-six response, responses, so please help that number grow. It is anonymous, so. Under the Consent Agenda Report, we've got the minutes of the regular meeting, one nineteen and two-two, and then we've got the approval of the building and wiring permits and the approval of the payment of bills. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, please? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Like, sign opposed, motion carries. All right, under Strategic Issues for Discussion and/or Vote, we've got the, so under F1, we've got a few outside entity requests. This is for funding. I do want to let the council know that the Revenue and Expense Review Committee receives these in the beginning. That is the process that the council has created, and that body consists of myself as mayor, Councilman Jack Rigger, Councilman David McCall, or David Thomas, sorry, and then we also have Ambie Jenkins, we have Barb Hinkle, and we have Scott Randall also. So that way, all, how we created this is all of our utility boards are represented there, as well as some internal staff that just helps us with crunching the numbers because we need, we certainly need assistance with that. So I do want to thank our members of the Revenue and Expense Review Committee. I'm sorry, Mr. Thomas, I didn't mean to misspeak to his Mr. Thomas. So I do want to thank you all for being a part of that, of that committee. So our first one up this evening, and just so everybody's clear too, the Revenue and Expense Review Committee does not approve anything except for to approve it, to recommend to the city council for official approval. We've received several requests, and some of them are, that are not on this report tonight is because they are not for this current budget year. We are taking up things that are in this current budget year that would go through June thirtieth, so.
If I could interject?
Yes, Mayor.
Also, the Revenue Review Committee sends a recommendation out. That does not mean we couldn't amend it here either.
Correct, yep, yep. But the Revenue and Expense Review Committee does vet it, we have a lot of discussion, and we do, you know, we do talk it out, and so the recommendations that are here are, I will say, very well thought out. The first up is the approval of an outside entity funding request and contribution to the Buchanan Upsher Chamber of Commerce Annual Awards Dinner. Now, so that, so a few years ago, we began sponsoring the Chambers Awards Dinner that would also provide the council and some, and our directors tickets to also attend and partake in that celebration. The West Virginia Ethics Commission has ruled that city councils and county commissions can sponsor an event such as the Chamber of Commerce Annual Awards Dinner, but we cannot provide tickets for council members or city employees to enjoy the dinner. So the recommendation, or the request was for two thousand dollars, that was the sponsorship level. As per the direction and suggestion of Councilman Rigger, the request that is being sent to city council is for one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, which is essentially the sponsorship minus the dinner tickets, because we cannot take part in that. If we would like to go, we will need to purchase our own tickets from the Chamber of Commerce, but Tammy tells me there are one hundred or less tickets left to our annual dinner.
We already sold two-thirds of them. We're a month out today, and two-thirds of the tickets are gone.
So, so that is the recommendation. Do any of the, of the other members of the Revenue and Expense Review Committee, would you like to comment?
No.
Okay.
I was going to ask Tammy if you have any, anything to add, your question.
I mean, of course, we'd like to see council there, so tickets are still available at the office. We still hope that you'll purchase your tickets and enjoy the dinner with us.
How much is a ticket, Tammy?
Tickets are forty-five dollars.
Thank you.
Okay. When is it?
It's March the sixteenth at the Event Center at Rushy Ford. It starts at six, and we will present our five awards, just like usual. We're happy to be back in person this year. So we'll do Organization of the Year, Business of the Year, Citizen of the Year, and Businessman of the Year.
It's up to you. So the recommendation from the Revenue and Expense Review Committee is one thousand two hundred and fifty-dollar contribution.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Up next is the approval, request for approval of the two thousand and twenty-three Almost Heaven BBQ Bash event in the amount of ten thousand dollars. The original request was for the sum of fifteen thousand dollars, but where the Revenue and Expense Review Committee had some discussion is we've, there's some, they included some infrastructural requests that they were going to take on. We think we can do some of those things, and that's what we're going to meet about once, in a couple of weeks. So that, so that's, so we're looking at more of the nuts and bolts that we, that we can't, we can't do for you, and that, that sum comes up to around ten thousand dollars if we're doing our math correctly. Is there anything that you would like to add to or elaborate to? If you would, jump up there if you can.
Well, thank you for that, and I appreciate hearing.
No, I won't start. I'll start the timer.
Yeah, we appreciate that, and thank you very much. That was a question we had was extra water lines, extra power, that was very expensive. Five hundred feet of that power line two years ago was fifteen hundred dollars, now it's about five thousand. We know we're going to have to have extra. So we just didn't know where the city would come in, we talked about earlier, but that'll be helpful because there are some infrastructure things that we know we're going to need.
Right, and I spoke with Jerry Arnold and myself, Mr. Sanders, Jerry, we'll meet you down, and Brad, and we'll meet you down there the first week, first week of March-ish, and we'll get that, that lined out.
Perfect. Just to give you a little quick update, we, this time last year, we had no team signed up. We now have nineteen. We have thirty-six judges, we have at least ten R cars, we haven't even announced that yet. Just so you know, I was kidding Randy yesterday. We have, these folks are registered, so we know they're coming from at least right now fourteen states and Switzerland. We have a judge coming from Switzerland, so we're international.
We're being what was being. Now the international, we're like the United Nations.
I don't know if you've seen it on Facebook, but we're bringing in a dinosaur show, the Dino-Roar Tour. Craziest thing of all the things, but we have already had close to two hundred and twenty-five people share that one post about the dinosaur show. So we think that'll be a good So we think that'll be a good thing for the kids, so. We appreciate, we're excited. I think it's going to be a banner year. We have new food vendors coming we've never had before, so we're excited. Thank you. How much was it?
Congratulations.
What's the time there?
A minute.
Oh, there we are.
Oh, that's got to be wrong.
It was seven fifty? Maybe it was two.
Yeah, I was going to say.
All right. Do any of the Council members or specifically Revenue and Expense Review Committee members who have anything to add or discuss before we call for a motion?
I want to ask the question. This, this going, $10,000 going straight to the BBQ Bash? Or we're doing $10,000 worth of?
Oh, sorry. So the clarification on that is their request was for $15,000. Based on conversations with our Public Works Department, we, we can internally contribute about $5,000 worth of what they were going to try to take on to pay for. Internally, we could save money and do it ourselves because we operate utilities here in our city. So we are, we are writing a check where we would be writing a check per your approval for $10,000 to the BBQ Bash, minus the $5,000 that we can do the work ourselves.
Well, I want to mention too that this is one of those events that will bring tourism.
Yep.
Will put heads in beds, which is an expression you hear a lot nowadays. What hotel rooms we have in our community, I fully expect to be filled with this event. And it's going to put a lot of people on our main street and in our businesses, and that's where the 1% sales tax will help us recoup some of this. And then the, just the opportunity to promote the image of Buchanan to another group of individuals is really, it's hard to even put a value on that.
Why don't we accept the?
In a second.
I have a discussion.
Well, all right. So, so, well, Dave Thomas's motion, is there a second before we ask for further discussion?
I wasn't finished.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Well, okay, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Let's draw the motion, Dave. They weren't finished.
Really? Okay, that's fine. We, no, I don't want to do that. Motion second, there, now there's discussion. Okay.
Okay. Last year, we give them, what, $2,500?
Well, this wasn't here last year. This is the first year that this is coming back. We, we, what we have supported are the smaller spring and fall, yeah, competition, Rib Fest competitions that were held at the eighty-eight.
Well, I know we give Strawberry Festival $25,000 last year, and that is an event that goes on like eight, nine, 10 days, okay? This is a one-day event, right?
No, two, two, three days.
Is it two or is it three?
Well, they come in on, they'll be here most of three nights. They come in on Thursday, and the main event is Friday and Saturday.
So what's the $10,000 going to pay for? That's what I want.
Before we gave them a whole breakdown. We are losing sponsors coming here from, that'll hopefully take care of sponsor. If we don't do the Beer Garden, which was suggested, that's usually four, $5,000 revenue we're giving up because we're trying to push that into the local bars and restaurants and things like that. So those kinds of things. Cash prizes, we, we've already advertised $10,000 in cash prizes to the teams. It's really about fifteen. The $10,000 is for one set of teams, $2,000 for backyards and so forth. So trophy, I mean, it's, it's just that whole thing that we have to have sponsorships for. But we are getting other grants and others. This isn't the only thing.
This is also too, we're, keep in mind, it is compared to Stonewall Jackson Resort that has, it's a little bit easier for the, for them to, to have it over there. It is a little bit more, it takes a little bit more for them to do it over here because you're trying to set up in public parks and on city streets. And, and so we, this was a, this, this is to help get this back established in Buchanan and to help it go very smoothly.
Yeah, we'll have to rent and purchase things we didn't have to in Stonewall.
Right.
I mean, they just, you know, we had all the golf carts we needed. We're going to have to rent them here. We had just, there was just a lot of things there that we had. So getting that first year to get the infrastructure, that's my biggest concern. There's, there's a lot of infrastructure involved when you have eighteen maybe that need 50 amp power, which they're working on. And that's one of the things that we were talking about. So we're trying, that dinosaur show is a couple thousand dollars. So we're just trying to give some things so we really make it a good family event. When you're bringing people in from fourteen or fifteen states, they'll be staying here, filling up, even when we were in Weston, they were filling up hotels here at the same time. So that's, that's our goal.
They got music coming, so.
Live entertainment.
Well, I just want to make sure everything is, you know.
Yep.
Been writing, and everybody knows what's going on this time because I know what we went through back in 2016. And I don't want to get in that situation again.
Well, I can tell you that myself and Jody have been in a lot of, a lot of contact. Love you mean it. So we, we've been in a lot of contact. I, I, myself, Mr. Sanders and Mr. Arnold, we have met with them so far three different times about logistics, and we will be meeting more with getting this together, so.
That's, that's all I have to say.
I, I share Pam's concern. $10,000 is a lot of money. And here, we're in the middle of our budget sessions. We just heard from our fire department about needing forty-nine cylinders at $1,105 a pop, total cost of $50,830. We're looking at seating that we don't know yet how much that's going to cost at the Colonial. We, we don't really have a, we got a guesstimate as to what the Stockard Building is going to cost us. I, I'm just, I'm, I'm that Grinch guy that is always fiscally conservative. You might remember, Dave Thomas will probably remember it best, and we were talking about projects like the Colonial and Stockard back in 2016 to 2020. He said, "McCall, you just go out and borrow the money. It's, the rates will never be better than what they are right now." We resisted that because we didn't want to put that debt on the city and make the next couple of generations pay for it. I, I fully support the return of the BBQ Bash to Buchanan. But I think $10,000, what, what message are we going to send to Create Buchanan and the Senior Center and everybody else out there about giving $10,000 to one entity for a weekend event? I, I, the optics concern me a little bit. So I, I, I'm all about bringing the BBQ Bash back and contributing something in addition to the in-kind services, which we're valuing at $5,000 bucks. But $10,000 cold cash is a lot of money.
I, I would respond, I'm not concerned about the optics, David, for just one year. I mean, $10,000, we're in great financial shape, better than we ever have been. What I've tried to suggest to this Council numerous times is that over the next 10 years, we're going to have an extra $20 million that we never had three years ago. And I have seen so many organizations that get too much money that don't do well. And I think we have to hone our edges in, so to speak. Twenty million bucks is a lot of money.
I would be very, I would be very careful. That is not really accurate. We, we are, our, we are using $1.8 million of our sales tax money in our current budget.
I understand that.
We are not, that is not just extra money that's just over here that we're going to have the access to.
Did we have that three years ago, four years ago?
Well, but the comments I get back, and some of the others may, I don't know, is, have you guys, what are you guys going to, are you ever going to budget that $20 million? Are you ever going to spend it?
I'm not suggesting we budget it.
But I think you got to be careful how you phrase it because we have been very aggressive to budget the sales tax and utilize it for infrastructure repairs, for other things. So I don't want the public to think we're.
What's your point?
My point is I don't want the public to think we're sitting on.
I think it's misleading. The public, the public thinks that we are coming into a windfall of $20 million that has, is just sitting over there in a pot of money, or in a bank account.
I don't care how you define it, but we have $20 million hopefully the next 10 years that we didn't have three or four years ago. Okay, period.
Okay.
Am I right?
But that's all the public hears is the word $20 million.
Right.
And they think you got $20 million. That doesn't.
We haven't figured out what to do with it yet.
Because that'll be the first thing somebody will ask me tomorrow.
We have to do a lot of work on infrastructure. But I'm saying it's a lot different today than it was three or four years ago. And I don't understand why you don't think of it as different.
Well, because we're already spending it.
We're not spending the $20 million yet. We're spending some of it. I understand.
We don't have $20 million. We don't.
You're missing my, okay, let's say the state all of a sudden says, "We don't want you to have this sales tax anymore." You're done. Okay, that, that could happen at some point.
Sure.
I understand it. Okay. And we don't want to spend more money than we have. But it does not hurt for us to think, be visionary for what can be helpful for the future.
But I think what we're trying to say, David, we are. We, we've been through many, many budget meetings, and we've, we've assigned those funds to sidewalks, to infrastructure, to rebuilding our city as we want it to be. And, and, you know, that's what needs the follow-up once you make that comment that, you know, over the next 10 years, we're going to have $20 million we've never had before. And you've put a period on the sentence. You know, we are spending it, we are budgeting it, we're, we're being very, you know, very judicious with it. I'm very proud of what we're doing, but I just want us to be transparent that we are spending it as we go to a, to a large degree.
I think I am being transparent. And I think when you give an organization for one weekend or four days or whatever, $10,000, and then the next year, you're going to have a little bit more of a budget crunch, you can take back that $10,000.
Well, my intention is to, as one vote, is to look at it on an annual basis.
Exactly.
Never do you vote on something this year. This is their first year back. You know, I spent a career creating tourism opportunities for towns over many, many states. And I worked with many, many CVBs who trusted me and invested in me, paid me to bring my events to their city, and I delivered by putting heads in beds and creating an economic boom for them while I was there. And, and that's what we're looking for out of the BBQ Bash.
Right.
We're looking for a hugely successful weekend.
Right. And, and we need to do our part to make sure that it is successful and bring people here and so that they have a good time. Tor, we, we live in a tourism state, okay? Mike, you and I just had that conversation the other day. We live in a tourism state. And, and there was a prospective business owner in Buchanan today that I was touring around, and, and, and he is blown away by our community and blown away by it because he feels the tourism aspect that Buchanan has. All the events that we, that we push, all of the different activities we have for people to do. It, it is a happening community, and it's events like this and bringing it back is so crucial to the vitality of our community. That's, and, and I, you know, I, I understand the concerns about, you know, fiscal responsibility, but I don't see the $10,000 for, to bring an event back that hasn't been here in several years, to make it be as successful as we can possibly make it. I don't see that as us jumping off of the fiscal cliff, personally.
That's what, that's was my whole point.
Okay.
We don't, we don't have a fiscal cliff right now.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Rigger's waiting to pick.
Yes, we have Mr. Rigger.
He has for a moment, Tom.
Well, you know, anyway you look at it, $10,000 is a lot of money. However, with everything that's been said, you know, there, there's no question the amount of people this brings in. I remember the first year we had it, the lines of all the vendors that were able to sell. And they ran out of food. And I was disappointed that first night. I didn't get anything. But the communications I had from friends, you know, in Barber County and throughout the state, you know, I just sent a picture of one of the trailers coming in. They all went crazy wanting to come to Buchanan to the BBQ Bash. What was that, 2016?
Fifteen, sixteen.
Fifteen, sixteen. Same thing's going to happen, and we want to draw people in. And, and, you know, you, we want Buchanan to be in the forefront of people's thoughts. And like in the wintertime, there's nothing here. But the Dickens Village has the potential to be a draw because every town in West Virginia has a Christmas parade, but they don't all have a Dickens Village. So there are things we do need to support. And I think the BBQ Bash is, is a tremendous step forward for Buchanan, having it come back and supporting it and helping it get off the ground. This, this will be a new learning experience with everything that the city's going to be contributing. And Jody's bringing it in, the funny cars or whatever, the dinosaur. You know, Dave will go nuts over the dinosaurs, I'm sure of that. And I just see it as a win-win for everyone.
Appreciate your comments.
Heads in beds.
I call for the motion.
All right, so, all right, so you are motioning to approve. Oh, wait, we already did that. We already have, we have motion, we have a motion by Thomas, we have a second by Sanders. That was done a while ago. I will call for the question. All those in favor of approving $10,000 for the 2023 Almost Heaven BBQ Bash, please signify by saying aye.
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 Like, sign opposed?
No.
Let the minutes reflect that Councilmember McCauley is a no vote. All the rest of Councilmembers support.
And again, it's only, only as to the amount.
Just as a, when you, Jack was talking about people coming in. Oh, it's a simple comment.
And you want it to be heard.
Okay. I, I didn't believe it. Deanna can attest to, our second year in, at the asylum downtown, it is a fact, and we can go back and check. The, one of the ATMs in Weston ran out of cash on Saturday afternoon, and two gas stations ran out of fuel on Saturday afternoon. If you want to know how many people come.
Thank you. All right. F3, approval, this is, this is a very simple one. Every so often, this has to be, our, our Hazard Mitigation Plan has to be updated. Region seven handles that for all of the communities and counties within its footprint. And so this is in addition to our dues that we pay to Region seven. This is a one-time request for this Hazard Mitigation Plan update. They're asking for a $1,000 contribution from the City of Buchanan. I believe they asked for $1,500 from the County Commission. All, all of the county commissions in the footprint were requested for $1,500, and municipalities within the footprint were requested for $1,000. So our share of this would be $1,000.
So move motion to approve.
Okay. Motion by Mr. McCauley, is it a second? Who seconded?
I did.
Randy, we'll give it to Randy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed? Motion carries.
Give CJ and his partner time to vote. I think he has some help over there.
Aye.
Put him down for no. He's late. All right.
Faulty, faulty, faulty.
Faulty, 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 that's right. All right. I need to modify your behavior there, Councilman Rylands. Okay, we need to, all right, F4. We're not modifying behavior, we're good. All right, F4. We need to request to move the City Council meeting to Tuesday, March 14th, instead of Thursday, March 16th, so that we have the opportunity to attend the Buchanan Upsher Chamber of Commerce's Annual Awards Dinner. Could I get a motion to that effect? Motion by Pam, second by Randy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed? Oh, is it Rylands is good? All those opposed? None? Ayes have it. Thank you very much. Is Ambie still? Ambie's here, she's ready for us on, on.
Oh, she don't want to miss this.
Oh, yeah. So F5 and F6, Ambie has been working so very, very hard, and we appreciate it very much. As you, as, as been reported in previous council meetings, we are, we have applied for grants, grant funding to help us with the SYCC building through the USDA. And so there are a couple of items here that we need to talk about and get some direction on as per requirement. on as per requirement. So, Ambi.
Do you want me to kind of go over that a little?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
I mentioned it at the last meeting that there were some items that need to be, we've done the pre-application to the USDA, and then they require other items that we have to go through. And two of those items, and like I mentioned the last time, is an environmental assessment study. That Potestia can do that for us, it's $8,000 to have that done. Then the other item, F6, that needs to be done is a financial feasibility study. That's been a little more challenging to find someone who have the qualifications to do that. There's several steps in that. They want to look at your demographics, at your finances, at potential income, potential use of the building. It's pretty in-depth, but it's, you know, it kind of proves whether you should get this grant or loan. I have a call in for a firm from Charleston tomorrow who will, wants to ask some questions about it, who might be able to do that. If they can't, then there's another firm that I can approach, but, so I don't have a cost on that. But now, if you, just so you look at that, the reason we're looking at USDA is because it could be partly a grant and partly low-interest loan. So it's, you know, a building that's $3.5 to $4 million, it's going to make a lot of difference in interest. So if we could, you know, save a percent of interest, you're talking a million to a million and a half dollars over the term of the loan. So investing in it now, having it prepared for shovel-ready at whatever point we get ready to do this, those interest rates are, I feel pretty sure, going to be lower at USDA than we're going to be able to get them on.
If I'm not mistaken, we're still working on finalizing the.
Lots of things still to do.
There's still plenty of things that would have to be done anyway.
Oh, we're still working, we're still feeding them information.
And the architect is still working, finalizing what's going to be required for any lender to review or any.
Any lender, but that, yeah, these.
And we've seen people, we're testing soil, you know.
Yes.
Do they have 40-year loans now?
Yes, there are 40.
Okay, I couldn't remember that.
We're looking.
But I just, but I just want to counsel to know that there's still cost and activity going on.
Yep, you can see the stakes over there now. That explains them.
Thank you.
We're looking at. So you can actually table F6 because I don't have the information for that.
Right.
If you want to proceed with the five, that's $8,000.
Counsel?
Motion to approve.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so that's F5, McCauley, and who are you giving it?
Thomas.
Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed?
Aye.
We're all four.
Yeah. Okay, and we'll table F6. F7, approval recommendation from the Colonial Arts Center Board, naming opportunity agreement between St. Joe's and the city. I will defer to you. I was actually with Skip at Hospital Association in Charleston during, and I missed the Colonial Arts Center meeting, so.
Well, I'm going to actually defer to Mr. O'Neill.
Oh, okay.
To give us another review as well, but while we're waiting on him, we'll just tell you that this is something that took place in a ceremony quite some time ago.
Right.
You know, when, when.
They, they offered $50,000 for the, yeah.
Right. But we haven't, while we've memorialized it with a, an agreement, a ceremony, we still lack the legal documents, so Mr. O'Neill, let you take them there.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I thought Ambi was going to speak, I didn't realize I was going to be speaking to this tonight. So the F7, as, as Mr. Sanders said, is a memorialization of the agreement by which St. Joseph's will essentially buy the naming rights to the educational suite on the lower level of the Colonial Arts Center for a $50,000 donation payable over five years and five increments of $10,000. The agreement is for 10 years, but the payments will be made over five. They will also be entitled to have a usage of the meeting space on a quarterly basis. They can have one, they have the space exclusively once per calendar quarter with rental fees waived in consideration of this, this gift. We do clarify that they have to identify an individual who is the authorized person to schedule the facility, so we don't have, you know, three or four different department heads, whatever, trying to use the space altogether. They will, they are responsible for creating and installing all the signage associated with acknowledging their, their gift. And if any members have any questions, I'd be happy to.
Another important thing is St. Joe's will be the only medical facility with naming rights.
That's right. This is, this is exclusive to that industry, so.
And I have a question, we have 22 here.
Oh, I'm sorry, well, we can strike that.
We can, we can, okay.
It's very important that word "medical," that we feature that because it's not, doesn't apply to a college, it doesn't apply to.
Right.
A law firm, it doesn't apply to anything else like First Energy.
No, but this, this saves the space from competitors of theirs.
Right.
Which is a standard term in environments like this.
Sure. You want, are you going to?
They can donate, they just don't have any.
Oh, so.
Yeah, they can donate, but they have naming rights.
But we just can't have it, right.
Tom, will you have a new version done or for the mayor to sign, or we just sign it?
We'll use that one, it's all right.
Just strike out the 22.
It's correct at the top.
So in 10 years, if somebody else comes in, wants to donate $50,000 or whatever, can they, can they rename? Sure?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, it's 10-year.
That's typically the way.
Right.
Stadiums.
So Appalachian Power Park was recently just renamed to Gomart Park because Appalachian Powers.
Yeah.
Their branding's there, won't be there, but that doesn't mean they can control what's being put in that.
Correct. It's just a.
No, it's just a, it's just a sponsorship and a branding and the right to use the space without charge once per calendar quarter.
Okay.
Any, any further discussion? I entertain a motion that, okay, Randy, second?
Second.
Pam, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Didn't forget him this time. All those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, thank you. Okay, we've discussed this before, and it's back on the agenda, but we don't really have any additional information to share with council as of yet. Mr. Sanders and I reached out to the leadership at the, at the National Guard. Mr. O'Neill has weighed in as well, but we don't have anything concrete back from them yet for us to consider, for us to talk about. So we are still in the communication phases with this. So the, we're just, we're, there's, there's nothing new. There will be the same discussion we had before. We still don't know the details of what a, what the additional or, or changing expectations could possibly be with us assuming our own naming of a tenant to the leadership and management, bless you, of the, of the, of the convention center. So it's still, it's still the same.
Does this table the future?
Well, no, I think we need a little discussion, though. Just, just to bring everybody up to complete date, we did reach out to, to the readiness center management teams at the National Guard. Their council, Leslie Dillon, did respond back. We had a telephone conversation where we discussed our questions moving forward, explored some options, so there's some correspondence going back and forth that will then be considered by their leadership. But at the same time, we have an ongoing calendar, and the calendar just keeps ticking along. So we have a management team in place through the CVB until March 31st. But we also have other obligations beyond March 31st that we will need to honor, and we need to start working on those obligations too, so that there's no negativity pushed into the laps of unsuspecting renters who just simply wanted to have an event at, at a conference center. So we certainly need to make some plans to move forward, and I would put out a discussion possibly on exploring the possibility of sitting down with the current manager of the event center, Caitlin, and seeing if she would accept, would consider, and this is something that we probably have to do at the next meeting, but consider a part-time position for, for a short period of time through the transition, which would give us an opportunity then to, if we need to take it over as a city entity, we would have to repost a job, and Caitlin understands that. And, but we have obligations, and I just don't want the.
There are signed contracts.
I don't want the folks that have signed contracts or have, you know, been negotiating a signed contract to just be left hanging. And, you know, the person who has been working on those contracts is in a position, and again, we'd have to talk to see if the time period would work enough. I think that's a discussion the council should have.
And as you've pointed out before, back in 2013, 10 years ago, when we entered into this arrangement, the city is the less city.
Yeah.
It's not the CVB. We're on the hook with certain things under that lacy agreement, no matter what happens with the CVB.
Regardless, correct. That's very well put. And I would strongly consider, counsel, you know, considering us managing the city, just managing that facility moving forward.
I agree.
It's going to be, it is going to be, it's going to mean we search for, again, a strong salesperson, management-type person who can lead it and, and get the type of events that's going to make sense for a conference center. Because as the mayor pointed out, it is a conference center, really. It's called an event center, but we have confusion there now with another event center next door, so we probably should address it as a conference center. And we have financial obligations, whether, whether it's open or not, whether anybody's using it or not. We have financial obligations. I think we need to take a strong look at continuing to provide the conference center to the public as an asset.
I think Ambi reported in the recent numbers, the payoff on that $765,000 we borrowed is now $599,000. So we have, we have paid off some of it in the last 10 years we've been making payments, but there's another 20 or so years to go, right?
2053.
Yeah, there you go.
What's the interest rate?
I think it's 3.5%.
I think it's 2043, Robbie, I think it was a 30-year issue. I'm pretty sure.
It's 40, it's 40.
43.
Yeah, so.
With counsel.
No, it's a 40, it's a 40-year.
It's a 40-year, it's not a 13.
I'm, I think it's 2053.
I think it's 2043.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, I was going to say, we.
It's a long time.
We'll find out, for sure. When Ambi makes the last payment, I'll have her shoot a memo out to us. All right, but, but I would like counsel to consider action to allow us to discuss retaining Caitlin on a part-time basis at the end of her tenure with the seat, she's now employed by the CVB.
I would make that motion.
To clarify, are you saying part-time or temporary?
Part-time, temporary.
Part-time, temporary, actually, yeah. Yeah, we have to sit down and discuss it with her, so, you know, it's a.
Well, you want to move that we have the capability of working with Caitlin to discuss the future, and that's, that's just common sense, right?
Yeah.
I think you have a motion and a second.
I think we do have a motion and a second. I was still talking.
Sorry.
So that's okay.
So the motion and the second is to, is.
We're telling everybody.
Is to offer Caitlin.
Well, to discuss with Caitlin, I don't want to, I mean, I don't want to put her on the spot tonight, and, and.
Well, all we can do is offer, we, we can't, I mean, we're not.
For the minute, will you spell your last name for me again?
W-I-N-E.
Okay.
K-A-T-E-L-Y.
K-A-T-E-L-Y, okay. All right, the, what I'm asking for is to allow the mayor and I to discuss with Caitlin the possibility of her taking a temporary position beginning April 1st. I would say for probably 90 days, which could be a part-time, could, could be a part-time position. I think that makes sense. And, but it gives us the opportunity to talk with her.
Sure.
And honor and continue to operate until we get a clear definition of what the future might be.
I still move.
Okay.
And I bet you still say that.
And, okay, all right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Like, sign opposed?
He's in the recliner in South Carolina.
Got a comment there, CJ?
Well, actually, I have a comment, not a vote, because I think the first step is to talk with the National Guard. This, this thing has been, we have operated it a lot from the get-go. So what, is that what the council wants, to undertake a, something that's never paid for itself and keep doing it?
I would just, I would just offer very quickly, we do a lot of things that do not pay for themselves and never can. I mean, we can't, we will never, we will never make money from a fire department, a police department. We will, I mean, we're, we're not, we don't make money off a stalker, and, and we are never going to make money from Colonial Theater. I mean, it's never going to sustain itself. There are certain things in a community that, we do not make money from our parks, we don't make money from our streets. I mean, we are, we are, the only things, the only, the only areas of the city where we, where we make money are from the services that we provide. And when I say make money, we are able to operate those services. We are not, we are not flushed with cash. We are able to operate them and keep them going are water, waste, and sanitation. Because you are getting something for the mon, it's, it's, it's an exchange. So I would caution us to, to look at this as a straight-up, is it going to make money or is it not? Again, I, where I, where I, I understand CJ's point, I'm not suggesting we just throw a whole lot of money at it and, and expect nothing in return. I think that there has to be a, an expectation and a, and a, and a goal set forth of, of the revenue that we can possibly get back out of, out of renting the space. But to think that we are going to operate the majority of what we operate and make money is not going to happen. We, we are, we are not a business, we are a service organization, and, and, and we provide services to our community, so.
And let me be clear, CJ, the motion is not to continue in perpetuity to operate the event centers, to honor the contracts and the obligations that are out there over the next 90 days.
Right.
Beyond March 31st while we do that. And also, I don't know if you caught the part, we are working on setting up those, there's correspondence going back and forth with the National Guard now.
Yeah, and that's, that's a great first step. It's just that, you know, we, we give out, I believe, the maximum of our hotel payout has been given to the CVB up to this point at 70%, and they have said they no longer can afford to manage this, so give us to the city, they got a lot of money, and they'll just handle it and, you know, whatever they can do to lose that last or, or whatnot. I just think that there needs to be a conversation about how, you know, what's the, what's the long-term way forward for this, but it's, I don't disagree with your motion to see.
Okay, I, I just want to clarify something because I sit on the CV board.
I do too.
The CV, well, you don't sit on the CV board, but.
Nope.
But I want to clarify something, CJ. They did not have a conversation where they said, hey, we're losing money, we're just going to throw it back at the city because they have a lot of money. They're in the crosshairs of accreditation situations with the state of West Virginia. And the, it's a 40-40-20 mandate that they spend their money, 40% on salary, 40% on marketing, and 20% on operations, and that has been turned topsy-turvy. So the CVB has been forced to spend 40% on operations, and really, more than that, less than 20% on marketing and 40% on salaries. I'm probably off on those equations. Bottom line is, this is the last time we'll probably be able to get our CVB accredited because of the event center. And they can no longer do that and sustain their identi, their identity as a CVB. And I think we all want a CVB. We want to have a CVB, so, so I just want to make sure we say it correctly.
So does this mean that we will be reducing to a lower percentage of than 70%?
No, I don't think that we could, I don't think that we could do that. I mean, I, I mean, our, look, the, the, the job, the job description and offering from the CVB board, based on the current revenue, even in taking out the convention center payment, is the best, the best is in the mid-30s for a salary range. I mean, we, the CV, this week, if we, if we cut any funding from the CVB, the CVB will close. That's, that's where we're at. We, we have lost significant hotel-motel revenue in this community. We, we, our Hampton Inn is gone, and, and, and the current hotel out there is not getting the same kind of traction as the Hampton Inn once did. Part of the bicentennial is now apartments, the colonial is now apartments. We, we do not have what we once did. And, and so we're, we've seen, and we, and that combined with COVID, we, we never did as a community recover from, after COVID, with seeing those high rates of hotel and motel occupancy. So if, if we, really, if anything, I mean, we should be looking at, you know, 70%, maybe 75%. I mean, that, that's, that, we don't, we're not in a position to cut anything from the CVB if we want the CVB to continue.
Anything else, CJ?
I just want to, can I say something?
Yes.
I just want to piggyback on this to some degree with what CJ was saying, and I think his concerns, is we have to be careful. I've been on this council for a long time, and I voted for all of the Colonial Theater and the Convention Conference Center and the Stock and Use Center, the kind of facilities we're going to have for the future. But at the same time, there's a cost of that. And I, I try to break things down between variable and fixed. And we have, are going to have some facilities here that we.
And we have, are going to have some facilities here that we've never had before. One is Stockard Youth, and that's going to be a $4 million, $3.5 million, $4 million facility. And we're going to have not just the borrowing costs, but we're going to have to have, you know, individuals in there cleaning utilities and so forth. The same with the Colonial Theater. So this council, over the last X amount of years, we're digging a lot more fixed costs and we need to be aware of that. That's why I still feel good about that $20 million in the next 10 years. We have, I think, the capability of working with that, but we have to understand how costs vary based on fixing.
Somebody check on Ambie. She's still, are you breathing back there? There you go.
I'll talk with Ambie about it.
All right, are there any other comments relative to the motion and second made this evening about continuing our, the obligations that we have with the signed contracts and then working toward a possible solution with Caitlin to help us with this endeavor? We good? So there is a motion and a second made, correct? We have McCauley and Buckle. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Like, sign opposed? Motion carries.
You name it.
Okay, yes, sir. F9, very easy one. As you know, we have a few, we have two vacancies on the Buchanan City Planning Commission Board. I've asked two individuals. One got back to me with an affirmative, I'm still waiting on another one, so we don't have another meeting until April, but I'd like to ask if you would please approve Mr. Tom Lynch. Tom is a citizen on Pocahontas Street. He's been active with Artistry on Main for many years. Tom brings a wealth of knowledge and is a citizen here by choice. I think that's important, that we have a good mix of folks on our boards. So I would like you to approve my recommendation to add Tom Lynch on our planning commission.
Sure.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Thomas, a second by Mr. Rigger. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Like, sign opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. We are down to council comments and announcements, and before we get started on that, please remember, we'd like to keep them positive and good news for our community. You're welcome, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you.
And also, don't forget executive session following the meeting. So Pam, you're up.
I don't have anything to say.
All right.
That's good and positive.
That's good and positive, you're right. Mr. McCauley.
Good meeting. Don't want to be doom and gloom with our financial situation. I agree with Dave Thomas, we're better off than what we were back in 2016, but those six costs that he just talked about, we've got some of those coming down the pike. We know that we're going to be spending a lot of money on a $4 million building and we want to keep our water and sewer plant operators and we want to keep, you know, the cost of what we do is never less. It's just like when the gas company and the electric company, they charge a little more every year. They go before the Public Service Commission because their cost of doing business increases and so too does the city of Buchanan. So I just, I just want to be that constant trumpeter of, you know, not getting too far out there. That's all I got.
Thanks, Dave. Jack?
I want to commend Chief Gregory for the excellent work that he continues to do and, of course, the progress that's being made up at the airport and their financial standing and the management steps that they're taking. I think that's very encouraging. The barbecue bash, I'm disappointed, I'm not one of the 36 judges. But that's all right, that's all right.
We'll work on that, Jack.
But anything, excuse me, anything we can do to bring people into Buchanan, that's a significant event. We have the Strawberry Festival, we have Wamsby at the same time. And that's a lot of good.
Bless you.
A lot of good publicity for our community and it's just very encouraging. And that's about all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Thomas?
I echo what everybody said, good meeting. And I, next year when Laura Ward comes here and makes a report on the transit authority, I will have been in the van.
There you go. CJ?
I don't have anything.
Enjoy your time.
Take care, CJ.
Mr. Sanders?
I want to give a shout-out to Senator Caputo's office and the work that we've been doing to get bands from all over the world here. We've run into some hiccups with embassies in El Salvador and Honduras and Colombia. So we've been working closely with the senator's office to see if we can at least get an appointment for those bands. What they ran into was because COVID had everything so backed up on those US embassies, they said, hey, we can certainly entertain your request, but our next group opening, our opening for a group to apply will be in 2024 to consider for visas. So the senator's office was gracious enough to step up and assign somebody to that task. And today, we got our first positive response that one of our bands is now scheduled for a group interview. We can't, I mean, it's up to them to get their visas. You know, that's, they got to pay for them, they have to, you know, meet all of the requirements. But I really appreciate Senator Madsen's office is helping with some other things as well, but things are moving on greatly. But it was great to get that email today that the embassy did say, and I believe it was in El Salvador, here's a date, let's make it happen. So that was good. So we'll have more to report on Wamsby as we get further down the road, but thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm happy to report that the Parks and Recreation Board and both committees are off and running. We have had a Parks and Recreation full board meeting, well, actually, we've had three meetings. We've had a Parks and Recreation complete meeting with the board and both committees sitting in the room. We've had a regular Parks and Recreation Board meeting where we were up here at the tables. And then last night, we had both committees meet and they are coming up with some great ideas. I'm very pleased to report that the Facilities Committee, which is led by Robert Osborne, has already taken the initiative to meet at the city park. They're going to be meeting over the next several weeks at all the different city parks and making a lot of different recommendations and observations so that they can compile a comprehensive report to Consolidated Public Works and City Council. So that board and both committees are doing a great job. Rachel Ruffing is a member of the programming committee, so it's really, it's really going very well and I'm really glad the council, we've taken this step and taken this direction. This past week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, I was in Charleston for the West Virginia Municipal League Legislative Conference, it was very well attended. And so I am on the executive board of the West Virginia Municipal League. I serve as treasurer and so in a couple of years, I will be in line to be president of the West Virginia Municipal League. And so that's a very nice organization. We get a lot out of that organization, as do all cities and towns across the state. It is the only trade organization that I am aware of that every single related body is a member, is 100% membership in the West Virginia Municipal League, which is fantastic. So that means that our cities and towns believe in the mission and so what we do is we work to, to help further our cities collectively at the state capitol through lobbying efforts to make sure that we continue to have the opportunity to make local decisions here for our communities. So I want to thank our local delegates and local senators for meeting with myself and Mayor Marco from Elkins and Mayor Harrison from Weston and all of our local North Central West Virginia city and townships. It's really, really great to hear what other folks are doing and a lot of people want to hear what Buchanan's doing. And so that speaks to all of the folks who live here and make us truly one of the best places to live, work, and play in America. So with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to, we adjourn at 8:48.
Executive session.
And we were going to have an executive session, so we'll allow for 10 minutes or so to clear the room. CJ, we're going to shut down, go to a meeting. I will call you on my cellphone if that's okay.
I can actually leave it up and.
You want to or?
Not record.
Okay. That's fine, whichever is you. Okay, scratch that, CJ. You can, you can stay on the phone. All right, we adjourn at 8:48.